Your microphones are live?
Good morning. Fun as always.
Candidates.
Could everyone take your seats, please? We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for invocation? And Pastor Bradley, would you please come forward and lead us in the invocation?
Let's join together. Lord, we give you praise and glory. We thank you for this new day and the many blessings that you bestow upon us. And, Lord, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in America. And, Lord, this year, we pray in this election year with so many issues and so many passions, Lord, help us to guard what we say and what we do, that we would not further divide but be a source of unity. And, Lord, we thank you for our city, Benita Springs, and mayor and city council and how they serve us. And, Lord, I pray for all of those who serve in our city, our city staff, and law enforcement, fire, and EMS. And, Lord, as always, we pray for those who are serving in our military forces, Lord, that you would be with them today, that you would guard them and watch over them, especially those in harm's way. Lord, protect them today. Bless their families here at home. Lord, you taught us to pray, "Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." So I pray, God, that our hearts desire today would be to do your will and glorify your name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilman McCall, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty, justice, and moral law.
Rule call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilwoman Slavta?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons?
My pleasure to be here.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, everyone.
Bill's here, too.
I knew there was more of you than that.
I don't even remember.
Out there. I had a feeling, anyway. Okay, at this time, we're going to have public comment on agenda items. That's on agenda items. I beg your pardon.
Mr. Mayor, before we start that, just an announcement to everyone here. We're aware that we've run out of packets. More packets are being prepared as we speak.
Ah, good. So those of you who are waiting for a packet, they will be down in a while. And don't be surprised if you parked in the wrong place if someone doesn't come and tell you to move your car. So, anyway, that, we'll see how that goes. But, anyway, at this time, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item? That's an agenda, item that's on the agenda. Yes, sir?
Yes, Mayor, council people. This piece of property on Hickory Boulevard...
I'm sorry, Rick, for the record, your name?
Yeah, Hoover.
Who are you? Rick Steinmeier.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Excuse me. Said hello to everybody. All right, you're right. This piece of property on Hickory Boulevard in the Bayside, it's called a paper road. I don't have a complete definition of a paper road. It once, from knowledge of the people that used to live there, that it was used as a boat ramp, access for the people of Benita Springs, which it was designed for access to the bay. I believe this is short-sighted. It's at least a $200,000 piece of property that the people of Benita should be able to use. The offspray nest is not going to be there forever. So I don't, I think we're premature on this. In the future, we're going to want to use that for an emergency entrance, for dredging boats and emergency boats, boats to get into the bay. There's many opportunities there. There is no house there. There's nobody there to maintain this property at the current stage. That's enough on that. Plastic bags, I don't know what, disposable plastic bags, they're all disposable as far as I'm concerned. You know, the bags we usually put our garbage cans, that's disposable bags. One bag the same as the other bag. Some are stronger. Wimpy, wimpy.
Sorry.
I'd like to note, there's $2,500 in there for the Veterans Memorial on Riverside and Veterans Day. I don't know what they're going to use that for, if they need it, maybe they don't need it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Marietta Balla, and I'm the chairman of the board of the Cafe of Life. I want to thank you for having us here today and hearing our story. It's very important to us, and we hope it's important to you, too. I also would like to thank all the people who have come here today to represent the Cafe of Life, many of our volunteers, and other interested citizens from our community. And I would like you just to stand for a moment to show...
No, we're not going to do that, but thank you very much. I get the, I think we get the picture. But, thank you so much. But, go ahead.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you.
It's all right.
Thank you.
I'm Deborah McLean. I'm the publisher of the Banana Peel, and I'm here to speak about Cafe of Life. They have drained city resources for years. We've been trying to get them out of our parks and out of our hair for years. I understand they are do-gooders and Christians, and that is a good thing. However, on Monday, the 8th of October, the sheriff took a public stance that any soup kitchen or soup line would be a detriment to this community, and it was up to the city fathers to vote this down because he knows from experience what has happened in other cities. Cecil Pendigrafts, who is being, is a candidate for District Two of Lake County, echoed his sentiments and went further to say that social services have destroyed the city of Fort Myers proper. And Larry Hart, the former chief of police in the city of Fort Myers, echoed his sentiments. I ask you to listen to these men who are going to be responsible for the county. And I understand we're going to have a wonderful PowerPoint presentation, and I understand that these people think they're doing something good, but their numbers are small. They are 300 volunteers, 200 recipients. Don't count the meals. How many people live in Benita Springs? And what is your duty to the citizenry of Benita Springs?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. There you go. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Victoria Charles Vicki. I've been working in hotels locally for 10 years. I've always stayed employed, living in the city. I am a single, 51-year-old woman. I do not make that much money. So at the end of the week, I count on resources like Cafe of Life. This is a community. Downtown is where we have community services. We have our Salvation Army. We have our United Way. We have goodwill assistance to fill out applications for work. Everything is community-based, just like in any city. Now granted, we are either a wealthy or a poor city. The wealthy people do not like to see the poor, as if we already, we feel badly enough having to stand in a soup line. But to be treated like we are a blight on our community, the opposite is quite true. I work in this community, vote in this community. I'm a middle-aged woman. My vote counts, and when I need assistance, I get assistance. I appreciate the help. You can make the problem go away, but it doesn't make it stop. You move it, remove it from sight, it's still there. Fifty percent of us are working poor. I speak a little Spanish because of my work in the industry, hotels. I speak to the Spanish people. Granted, some of them have working husbands. It's their chance to have a community. The mommies get together, they throw a birthday party for the little children every month. Clothing, diapers, medical assistance, I get. I have no insurance options. Yet a doctor comes to the park every Thursday. So I just, I wish you would think about any great city, Tampa, Orlando. You can't just say, "We don't have a hunger problem," and therefore, poof, it's all gone. It just doesn't work that way. Moving us down to Rosemary, I totally oppose that move. Finally, Cafe of Life was able to acquire the women's center. We have a refrigerator right there, fresh salads, vegetables, a place to store the diapers for the mommies. To move us is just, is hiding us out on Rosemary. It's not, it's not community-based. These are my friends, these are retirees, these are disabled vets. These are good people. We're not a blight on this town. Thank you very, very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. I'm sorry, we're, we're not going to do that because we will invite the opposite then too, as well. So, thank you so much. Yes, sir?
Mayor Nelson and council members, I'm Doug Pratt. I'm the senior pastor of First Presbyterian Church. Cafe of Life has been in this community for a long time. You know it. It has been a responsible, supportive part of our community. One of the arguments used to support the introduction of slot machines at the dog track was that the people who own the dog track have been here for a long time, and we know them, and they're good citizens, and they've been a part of this community. Cafe of Life has been a part of this community as compassionate, devoted, volunteer citizens for a long time. So you know them. The faith community is behind Cafe of Life. The presence of a number of pastors here today, and others who would be here if their schedule allowed, and a number of church volunteers should be a testimony to you that a significant part of your constituency, thousands of voters, are in our churches on Sundays. In my own church, dozens and dozens of volunteers, hundreds of donors, have expressed their support for Cafe of Life. Therefore, we need you to step up and approve what is a very reasonable, affordable, and a well-thought-out proposal. They have jumped through all the hoops you have put before them. When the proposal for slot machines was presented to you, which I personally spoke against, but nevertheless, you decided that we would open up our city, figuratively speaking, to anyone who wanted to come. And if we are going that road, we're going to have social needs, and we can't ignore them. But this is an opportunity to powerfully continue to be a city that cares for all and to do so at no cost to you. It's a win-win-win. Therefore, I hope you'll see it that way, and I hope you'll listen to the voices of many, many concerned citizens who are in favor of the Cafe of Life proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next speaker, please.
Good morning. Christine Ross, the CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to comment on three items today. First, the tree advisory committee. I just would like to recommend Ben Kurtz. He is a licensed landscape architect who works in the city and is a resident in the city, and I think his expertise would be wonderful. He's actually an expert in the native plants of Florida and just does a beautiful job, the work that he does. I'd also like to make a comment about the plastic bag resolution. I want to suggest, again, that we, you're putting the cart before the horse. I think that before anything is written and created to provide direction to the city's advocate, Carol Green, that we should convene a group of retailers and chat about what is and isn't possible and what would be good or not for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias. Yo me llamo Magdalena Baltazar. Yo vivo in Rosemary.
Good morning. This is Magdalena Baltazar. She lives in Rosemary. I'm Brother Ben from Los Hermanos here in Benita, and I'm translating for her.
Okay.
The Cafe of Life provides a lot of services for a lot of people in Benita Springs. It's not just the food. It's also medical, there's psychological services, and there is a great need, and she knows. Her husband works, but they don't have enough to make it, so she uses the Cafe of Life to supplement their getting by. Thank you for everything that they have been allowed to do. Please let them continue to work and to help us in many ways.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mi nombre es María Teresa Cisneros. Primeramente vengo a darle las gracias por todas las ayudas que nos han regalado en los momentos más difíciles.
My name is Teresa...
Maria Teresa.
Maria Teresa Cisneros, and she lives in Rosemary Park, and she wants to thank you for everything that's been allowed to be done by the people of Cafe of Life over the years.
Hace un año yo tuve un accidente, me quedé muy mal de mi espalda, estoy saliendo adelante, y cuando no tengo que comer, acudo a ellos.
A year ago, she was injured in her shoulder, and she couldn't do much, but she used the Cafe of Life to help her family be fit and stay.
Mis cuatro nietecitos que dependen de nosotros, solo mi esposo trabaja y una hija, y ahí encontramos comida, ropa, hasta medicinas, y yo estoy muy agradecida de todo corazón y por tanta gente que de verdad lo necesitan. Así que gracias y que todo siga adelante. Dios les pague.
Her husband works, but they don't have enough to always meet it, their needs, and she takes the four kids, and they go over to Cafe of Life, and they get more than just food. There's clothing available, there's food to take home, there's diapers, there's medical help. And thank you, and may God continue to bless this organization.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Rayanne McCall for Cafe of Life. What we're talking about here is a small piece of land, about five tenths of an acre, that butts up to Imperial Parkway, it's left over from the construction of that site. The land is overgrown, full of weeds, and is absolutely, absolutely useless, as it stands now, to the members of Rosemary Park. Cafe is proposing to make this strip of land an asset both to Benita Springs and to the aforementioned residents. At absolutely no cost to the city, a park can be built on this land, and this would be a park where parents can take their children, that is safe, fun, and clean. And for two hours, on Monday through Friday, Cafe serves a warm lunch for those in need, and many other services are provided, and you just heard those, so I won't repeat them. This is not too much to ask. It is not too much to give. This would be an asset to the city and to Rosemary Park. I'm asking you to reach into your hearts today and do the right thing. Please approve the Leitner property for Cafe of Life. This is so little to ask, but would be such a very big gift. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. You can go ahead and pull that microphone down. There you go.
I have to. Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful, wonderful. My name is Arlene Rothstein. I live in Benita Springs, Lighthouse Bay, representing about two dozen women who have been working on, with our, our friends at the field under the banyan tree for about four years now. We don't take off for summers. It's, you know, you talk about your Christian community. Well, may I please, with your indulgence, represent the Jewish community? And my rabbi's wife has given me permission to talk. And don't you say in your gospel that, that if you care for the neediest of your community... I, I'm sorry, my familiarity with it isn't all that great. But we do care, too. We do care, too. We maintain our own soup kitchen, if you will. I hate the, the name of that term. We maintain it, too, in Naples. But what we do here, what we do here is one rare opportunity to get to see people, and it's a broad-based community, it's not only one group of people, it's many groups of people who are in need, and we get to see them one-on-one. Sure, we serve our meals, and we're glad to do that, and that's always fun, and it makes us feel good, and hopefully it makes their tummies feel good. But we also get to, we've expanded that to include hygiene products, the clothing, of course, what the supermarkets give generously, but these people, and it's a social thing for them. It's a social thing for us, too. Now, when we're presented, so very close to getting an area that might be more user-friendly than where we are now, but we're happy where we are now. That's good, and we're grateful for the fact that we are allowed to be there. We fought for it sometimes. Sometimes I've had to do some writing, and, but, forgive me, I write perhaps, hopefully, more eloquently than I can speak. But it matters so much to so many, that to consider this seriously is something that we have, we all owe them and owe ourselves. It's a rich country. We've got to learn to take care of those who, who need perhaps more than we need, and I thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Betty Dietzel, and I, too, represent Lighthouse Bay. Our country's going to pot. This is the most strenuous election in the world that we've ever experienced, at least in my lifetime. And I really feel that the Lord has spoken to my heart and said, "What difference can you make where you are, doing what you're doing today?" I'm 65, I choose not to run for office like you people, and you give your time. But what can I do? I can speak out when injustices are being done. And what we are here doing today is we are either saying yes or no to the ability to help those less fortunate than ourselves. We can do something today, here. We can voice our opinion, and we pray that you make the right choice. But allowing Cafe of Life to meet the services of those who aren't blessed enough to have what we have is just the right thing to do. And when I stand before my maker, I want to say, "I at least tried," and I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elvin Jones, and I hope you will pardon my lack of memory. At 82, I'm beginning to lose it, so I hope you will forgive me for reading this because it's not what it used to be. I came, I moved to Benita Springs in 2001, and very soon after that, I became a volunteer for the Cafe of Life and have served in various volunteer capacities ever since. Over the years, I have become very familiar with the enormous challenges our clients face in life. I also saw the positive effects that the loving care shown by our volunteers have had in helping our clients face these challenges. On various occasions, I have seen a client take control of his/her life, get a job, and move on. Later, sometime later, we will always receive a note of thanks and gratitude for the support that they received in their time of crisis here in Benita Springs. One woman, after taking a job with Goodwill, actually donated a large number of foam food containers as her expression of gratitude. These containers are very important to allow people to take what leftover food there is home with them and not waste it. I would also like to thank all those volunteers who, rain or shine, have continued to prepare and serve hot meals daily, Monday through Friday, under the conditions we have had to operate over the years. It would be a blessing to all to have a facility where we can serve people and they can sit down to eat, sheltered from the sun and rain. I urge you to approve the Leitner Creek project, as it will also provide a park area for the neighboring community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Riley Grandell, and I'm the senior pastor of the Gulf Shore Life Center. And I was here two weeks ago to give the invocation, and it was interesting that when I was here, Audrey Migg mentioned, she said, she said, "What are you doing here? There's no social service thing on the calendar at the time or on the agenda." And that's because most of you recognize the fact that when there's something having to do with the social services or the social service campus that we've pursued for the last several years, I'm here and speaking to it. The one thing that I'd like to do today is just to put you back in remembrance of your words to me and to those of us that were here when we've talked about this before. And your words were that you had compassion and that you felt the need that was there, and that if we could find a place that was out of the mainstream, if we could find a place to make this happen, that you would support it wholeheartedly. I feel that that place has been found, and now I ask you to stand to what you said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Arden McCurdy. I was not intending to speak today, however, I was here in the beginning of several years. In 1987, we came down, and I was not in favor of the Cafe of Life. I was not in favor of the way it was run. I thought it was very poorly run, and it was a disgrace to Benita Springs, I believed. I have seen it evolve. I know the people. I don't, I'm not involved with it personally, but I do know the people that are running it. I've worked with them in many organizations. They are well, well capable of doing this. Sorry. I do believe that Rosemary wants this park. I don't, I can't see why you all wouldn't want this park to help the citizens. The assistance office had 69 people come in Friday to get food to help them. We didn't have much food to give them. The Cafe of Life is another organization that can help them. We need all the organizations that we can get to help feed these people, most of them who work. There are a lot of children out there that need this food, and I hope that you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm Reverend John Anderson from the Bay Presbyterian Church here in Benita Springs, and I, I simply rise to express my voice and say that, on this matter, Doug Pratt had my mind, and I would speak in favor with the rest of the faith community represented here today for the Cafe and the project.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
City councilors, my name is Juan Romero, President of Casa Mexico, and today I'm here to ask you to not to agree with this. I'm a little bit concerned about this situation. Casa Mexico has been working hard. Two weeks ago, I was here, receiving a nice recognition for the community to work in hard in different ways. One of the ways Casa Mexico has been working is in sports. We establish in soccer. We are working right now, at this time, establish a basketball league, and also we have going on right now a food salad league. You have a information we just passing around this morning, got some pictures taken last night about some teams are playing, so they are players. We have rules, regulations, referees, and also we have registration forms from the city of Benita, and they are already paying. What we're doing is establish a league. We cannot have an agreement on something that's not established yet. So we are doing that. You have this information in your desks, and we're asking not to pass this agreement right now because, you know, we don't know who is these people leaving from, they are coming from Naples. I don't know who they are, how they're going to establish the program, how much it's going to cost for the community, when they're going to be playing. I don't have any schedules. I have concerns. I want to know what's the program, how, which groups are they going to be established? So before you, you know, pass this agreement, let's think about what is going on and figure out about this group. It's a wonderful idea of more people getting involved and wants to play, but make sure it's going to be affectous. We received information just last Thursday, last week, about this group, or their interest on playing. Actually, they are using our name, Benita Springs Food Salad. We have a food salad for a long time. We was playing international tournaments in the, up there. We went one very beautiful tournament against Holland. It was very good. But I'm a little bit concerned about all this. I don't have that information. I find out just last Thursday, and please don't pass that because it's going to be affecting. It's an agreement for a year, and like I say, we are already playing, establishing this league. You have proofs. You can come over and see what we're doing, and please don't sign something we don't know what's going to be happening. We maybe get some conflicts on the schedules and cost of people, you know, this, our program is for the families, hard work for the residents of Benita Springs. You know them, all the people who worked hard to build this pavilion for a long time, and a piece of concrete is going to be, build this parking lot. And with the meetings and the presenting the idea to put in this build and supporting from the city, we have this beautiful pavilion built. It's working, it's going on very good for the community. We got play basketball and the food salad. So I really, really ask you, don't sign that now. Think about it and go for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Next speaker. Come on up.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Meltrur Briseño, resident for Bonita Springs. Talking about the food sale league, I was playing there when it was just concrete a long time ago now. Very happy that the pavilion is on. We playing, we established it, I'll leave. I was a middle school back in the days when we start playing. Nothing on, no lights, no nothing. Now, my friends, me and my friends get together, some of them go to college, some of them got another jobs, and we get together and we play. We played like back on middle school. The benefits of playing there are great. Juan Romero, Balthazar, everybody is coming together. We got people that work very hard on the fields from Monday to Friday. The only way that they get to enjoy some of their little time is playing food sale because in the weekends they can't play regular soccer because either they got to be with their family for a little bit, or they got to go to another field, pick some more vegetables for us to have. This is not pickup games. We establishing a league. They don't want us to play anymore over there. We receive an email. I don't know why. But the last meeting that we had with the city of Bonita manager and Parks and Recreations, we did talk about establishing food sale league, Bonita, food sale league, and we working on it. You guys got the pictures? There's about eight or nine teams on it, and people want to start playing more. We just need more time. We need more, more help, and we're going to get it. We're going to get it done like it was back in the days. And these people from Naples trying to establish a league, they already have a league in Golden Gate. They got to come and take over a hardworking piece of property that we got, the pavilion. So people from Golden Gate, from Naples, from all over come and take over and leave the people from Bonita that been playing this and that really work hard for the pavilion to be there without playing. I don't think it's fair, but think about it and make the best decision for the city of Bonita Springs. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Lydia Roberto, and I'm just here to bring up the information regarding the hot rots and Harleys that will be discussed later on. I have a poster right here for everyone's information. It's going to be held November 4th if approved.
That's very nice.
I wonder if we, the camera could see it.
Oh, there it is.
Awesome.
And I'm just here for information purposes if it is approved. Thank you. It's going to be held November 4th. It's going to kick off from the beginning at 11 o'clock. The roads will be closed, if at all possible, just a little strip. It's going to start November 4th at 11:00 a.m. from the corner of Old 41 and Dean Street, and it will end and cease also in that particular corner.
And it benefits who?
Oh, benefit the Cancer Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else at this time, please come forward. You heading this way, Wesley? All right. All right, you're going to hurt your other arm there, buddy.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Wesley Norris and resident of Bonita Springs, about 30 odd years. The only point that I would like to ask council to consider this morning, as we all know, when we run for political office, we can make general statements as that just because you're down on your luck and just because it's a quote unquote soup kitchen or because we're trying to help somebody, doesn't necessarily make those people criminals. And be able to stand up and make a general statement saying crime rate has risen because of, without statistics and pointing out and showing me individually that that is actually tied into that, I just don't want you to make a decision based on that. Cafe of Life has been here a long time, and I don't remember any crime that the sheriff's department could come back and say, "Had that not been there, that crime would not have happened." And I just want you to kind of take those statements by those people who are running for office, as we all know, we embellish a little bit as we go along. Take that in consideration that just because they're down on their luck, they are not bringing more crime into our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
I'm Joanne Herata, Salvation Army, and I'm here to translate for Martina Ventura.
All right, you can look at us if you want. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Martina Ventura.
My name is Martina Ventura.
Vengo a darle las gracias por tener Café Life.
I came to tell you, thank you for having the Cafe of Life.
Yes. Cafe Life me ayuda bastante porque...
Cafe of Life has helped me a great deal.
Porque mi marido nomas trabaja y yo no puedo trabajar porque tengo dos niños aunque quisiera.
Because my husband is the only one working, and I cannot work at this time because I have two small children.
Yes. Me ayudan de pañales, de...
They give me diapers.
Wipes.
They give me wipes.
Cuando necesito, cuando necesito para los billes me dan.
They help me with the bills from time to time.
Medicinas, cuando necesitan mis hijos, ahí están también para ayudarme.
In order to help us.
Y quiero que siga Café Life para adelante.
And I'd like to see it just go ahead, this Cafe of Life.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, Mayor. I consider. My name is Balthazar Briseño. I'm resident of Bonita. I work voluntarily for the, you know, the soccer, paint, houses, trash, any, any in that for that, my, my city. I consider my city. I need you, sorry, Juan.
Juan Romero, just translate.
Yo necesito que nos tomen en cuenta.
I need you guys count to us.
Por el trabajo que estamos haciendo de...
For the work we doing.
Del, del food sale ahora.
For the food sale we doing right now.
Hemos trabajado muy duro para que el pavilion esté parado.
We have been working hard to build the pavilion.
Y nos gustaría que nos tomen en cuenta, señor mayor, porque no es justo de que nos digan de un día a otro, no jueguen más.
Mr. Mayor, we, I like you to consider ourselves because we just find out from one day to the next, you cannot play anymore.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Come on up.
Robert Vandergrift, Bonita Springs. During my childhood, I was born 1923, I witnessed the Great Depression. I hope it never happens to our country again, but I watched the poor and the needy. If you ever been to China or India or places like that, you really see poverty. We're blessed in this country to where people like myself that have gotten a better life, better job, retired to a nice community where we can help the needy and those unfortunate people. We need to do that. My Bible says that the poor will always be with us. The poor have been with us since our country, our world was formed. We will always have them. This is not a case of what are we going to do with Cafe of Life? It's what are we going to do to make it better? We can make it better by having them a better place, better than a banyan tree, better than displaying them in front of everybody. It's not nice to want and have to go to somebody to get something. You don't want to be on display. You don't want to be in the headlines. You want, you don't need to be paraded before council. You need to help the people. This, this thing that they are proposing today is a gift to these people that need it. All you have to do is declare a moving day. That's all you have to do. Put them in a nicer place, nicer environment, with wonderful people that are going to help them. They will be here whether you do this or not. Let's make it better for them. Let's help these people that want to help them and have a moving day for the Cafe of Life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the rest of our agenda here. We're to proclamations and presentations. At this time, could members of the Tree Advisory Board please come forward? You too, Colm.
I think they want you on the other side.
Hi, good to see you.
Hello.
We're, we're here to award Colm a certificate of appreciation, but I want to tell a story first on Colm.
Great.
Back in 1900, no, back in two, back in, yeah, right. Back when our, our city first incorporated, Colm was involved with that. And Colm's always been involved in our community here, and I have to take credit for something. After the, the first elections we had, we were trying to fill the LPA spaces and the zoning spaces and all the, the community activist spaces and advisors and committees. Colm, I insisted on having on there. I didn't know Colm that well, but I knew one thing about him. He has a, a very good soul and environmental conscience, and, and on top of that, he is somebody that will listen. He's a very pragmatic thinker. I mean, the combination of being an environmentalist and a real pragmatic thinker, I had to have him involved with the city. You guys all should be proud of Colm. He's a great guy. Colm, it's a pleasure of gotten to know you over the years. You've done so much great stuff. I don't know why, you're not retiring or anything, are you?
No.
Good, good. Well, then that case, we'll proceed, but I, I want to thank you. It's a pleasure to, to have known you these years, and it's a pleasure right now to award you this certificate of appreciation and recognition for your many years of dedicated service to the city of Bonita Springs. Tree Advisory Board, your vast knowledge, mastery, and expertise has been invaluable to our community. Colm, again, it's a pleasure to present you with this plaque of appreciation here, and thank you so much, and please don't go anywhere, all right? I'm going to ask you to say a few words.
Well, I would just like to say that it's an honor to have done this, and it's an honor to serve in, in, it's an honor to serve in any committee that the city of Bonita has a need for members, and I highly recommend it to anybody to please, if you would like to get involved, it's a great thing to do, so I highly recommend it, and enjoyed it very much, and I'm still involved with the Bonita Nature Place, and I intend to continue doing that and some other things with Lee County, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And this is our chairman of the Tree Advisory Committee, Steve Trudan.
Thank you, good morning. Colm will be missed on our, on our committee, on our board, and he's also involved with the Bonita Nature Place and anything to do. I've never met a person who, I believe casually, has, knows more about natural history than anybody else that I know of. He's a very talented guy. He's a sculptor and just will give you his heart, and he's going to be missed. Fortunately, he'll be staying in Bonita.
Everyone, please give him another hand, please. Thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
He's got that beautiful ride in that canoe.
Come down to this side, come on.
Okay, break it up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation of a conceptual proposal by Hastings Investments to create an osprey garden park.
Thanks, and I'll, I'll start it off for Mr. Andrea.
Okay.
Just so the council is aware, staff has been meeting with Mr. Andrea and Mark Richardson, who's the property owner, for several months about a proposal that he has. The parcel that is in question is next door to a property that Mr. Richardson owns under the name Hastings Investments. It's a single-family residential that Mr. Richardson owns. The property is easily identifiable because it has the osprey platform. So if you're driving on Hickory Boulevard on the right-hand or on the base side, you would see a large platform, and that's for osprey nests who come to roost seasonally on it. This is part of a plat as a public access, so public, we cannot ever prohibit public access unless council entertained a vacation request, which is a whole different thing, and that's not what's here today, nor can council sell the property. They have some ideas for use of the land, and they wish to provide it to you. And if it is satisfactory, then we'll proceed with paperwork, but we wanted to make sure council conceptually agreed with the plan, if they do.
Good morning. My name is Christian Andrea. I'm a landscape architect, and I've been working with the Richardsons on their property. As Ms. Vance indicated, that's property to the south of the green rendered portion of the plan there. The Richardsons are here this morning as well, so if we have any specific questions, they're here to address them as, as well. As part of our scope and goal with the Richardsons, and as part of the design process of their home, we were asked to take a look at the property to the north. Currently, it's in a kind of unmaintained state. There's an osprey nest on there, and in discussions of what could be done with that, the Richardsons have agreed to and are willing to, to commit to a private-public partnership with the city where they would pay for, maintain in perpetuity all the improvements of this osprey park that we've kind of nicknamed here. The property, let me turn, see if I can get this to work. The pictures along the top currently represent the existing site. The picture A on the upper left-hand corner, that small sliver of grass between the two driveways, there's a lime rock driveway there on the left side, and then there's a current asphalt driveway. The property we're talking about is that sliver of land right there. It's approximately 50 feet wide. And if you look to the next three or two pictures across the top, those represent current pictures of the site. The proposed design is including enhanced landscape around the property, creating a small seating area as a visual point and a bench, two access points for people to enter the park. The intent is for that to be open during daylight hours consistent with, with standards of a park, and then providing fencing along the street that would allow visibility and fencing along the north property line for security and privacy purposes as well. Scroll to the next picture. This is existing conditions. This shows the aerial photograph of the property on the left side of the drawing there. The next picture, the next plan on the right represents kind of a survey plan of the site, and then it shows again some more pictures of the site. This is a more detailed view of the proposed hardscape improvements. Along the streetscape, we're proposing some columns, mid-level railings, a bench and a circular paving pattern there, and then the walkways that access into the center of the park, and then a walkway system that would allow one to walk through and appreciate the park from within. This is a proposed planting plan. This is showing the enhanced landscape. We're talking about the, some specimen palm trees extending a wall fence again, and landscape around the peripheral, and you can see the pathway there. And then lastly, this is kind of an overview picture of what we think the project would look like, a much more managed design, so it looks more complete and finished. Wonderful opportunities for, for people to visit and sit in the bench area and observe the osprey nests. We want to make sure that's a feature of the property. As part of the commitment to doing this, we anticipate over a 20-year window that the investment costs that the Richardsons are contributing is in excess or in the vicinity of $200,000. That would include maintenance and the construction costs. So we respectfully request you consider this as a, an asset to the community and... So we respectfully request you consider this as an asset to the community and would request your approval.
Okay, good, good. Carl, do you have anything to add before you have some questions?
Well, staff has, staff has looked at this. At this point in time, we think it's a win-win for the city. Staff is recommending approval of this. Today, we are simply asking for your approval on the concept. We will need to come back to council with more specific details and an agreement between the city and the landowners.
Okay. Now, good. Council, do you have any questions at this time?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Martha.
I just noticed the hours in there were from eight to five. I'd like to know if there's some flexibility there. Well, because we own the property, we should have some flexibility there. Don't know. Parking would be another question about, I know it's always been a concern on Hickory, where are people going to park to go to the park? And my last concern has to really, I think this is great to have a public-private partnership. I know I brought this up to council to have a city park there three or four years ago. Yeah, because I, our good friend Rick Steinmeier said, hey, there's a paper road over there, and we could make this a lovely little park. We don't really have anything going to the bay. So I think that's a great idea, and I'm glad to know that we'll still own it, meaning we'll have control of it, so the public property will not go to a private owner. My concern, one, you know, fertilizer, bay, it's on the bay. I see it sort of looks like an English garden, which can be very attractive. Will we have restrictions on their use from September to, or June to September? Will they be exempt from using fertilizer?
That's a good question, because technically, parks would be exempt, but residential is not. Residential does have to follow fertilizer ordinance, so we could put in special conditions to make sure they adhere to the fertilizer for residential purposes.
And because it is on our beautiful bay, I just hope that we could use native plantings and wonderful design. I just want to make sure that less fertilizer needed, less, especially that part of the bay, because if you look at aerials, there's a lot of algae that kind of backs up there because they close the outlet to the Gulf, so it's hard to flush that area out. In concept, I think this is a good idea.
We can make sure in the license agreement that we include anything, but the hours, I would need to know. I mean, we could do dawn to dusk.
I did say dusk to dawn, didn't I? You know, that would be, let's party all night. I don't think you want that next door. I meant dawn to dusk. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
I think dawn to dusk, I mean...
Thank you. All right, Steve.
Just a couple of quick questions. I like, I like the idea. We dealt with Island Place not too long ago, talked about changing. Well, the microphone's apparently not on.
Keep up.
Go ahead and tap your mic a little bit.
It's on.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
No.
Hey, easy. Don't be mad.
Hello, hello.
I just want to hear you.
All right, just go ahead and lean into it a little bit, Steve. That's good.
Yeah, fix that for him. It's a short...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I like the concept. We had some questions earlier on Island Place and right-of-way and so on, and we're all in agreement on that. My issue today is a couple. One, if the land changes hands, the property changes hands, and we have a new owner of that property, how do we assure that the maintenance continues on that piece of property?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the question is contractually, the commitment runs with the land. Is this going to be an attachment to deed or some type of thing?
It would, it would, no, not to a deed. It would be a license agreement that the city would issue for use of the public access. The license agreement could put in money as a bond, so that we have a performance bond in case that they're not performing. We can use that money like a cash escrow. So, I mean, we could add something to that effect.
Okay. Still, I agree with the concept. Secondly, we talked about using that island place parcel as an interway for kayaks and canoes onto the bay. Is that, if this planting goes in as proposed, does that give people an opportunity? Is there space to do that sort of thing, to still get in and out of there?
I don't think from the mangrove side, and that's...
We, right now, though, as is designed, we have a three-foot walkway, so that's not conducive to a kayak to get through there. And whether trailers need to get to the water or vehicular access needs to happen, I think that's a, would probably take up 20, 30% of the site just to create a pathway back there, with somebody able to drop off a kayak or wheel it back there. So at this point, that has not been considered.
Okay. If you consider trying to figure out how we might be able to do that, we have lots of places you can launch, but we have made a public commitment that that would be available, so we need to make sure we understand that. And last, the architectural rendering is very nice, but in reality, it makes it look like this is part of the landowner's property, the homeowner's property, is doing this. And I want to make sure that people who would possibly use this park or come in and view the osprey nest recognize that that is a public, a public park, private-public park. So some way to differentiate to make sure that people don't go by and say, gee, that's a nice-looking piece of property, and not recognize that it's a park. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good. All right, anybody, any other comments? Yeah, Bill?
Good morning, everybody. The 25-year, Audrey, time, I would think that we might want to consider something of a, of a shorter duration in terms of five years with a renewable contract, and only that because things change and times change. And 25 years is a long time, and would you please consider?
Sure.
Some alternatives for the council to review?
Remember, there's things that are being placed, so five years might be too short, 25 years may be too long. We may come up with a just-right number during negotiations.
Thank you very much.
Well, probably as a suggestion, I mean, I mean...
Right.
And there's an understanding that in exchange for investing a great deal of money...
Right.
Well, if you decided to do it, decided to take the top park over and do something else with it before the 25 years, there'd be a proportionate payback for the amount of money that the people had in there or something like that.
Idea.
Something to that effect. I don't know.
Good idea.
You know, that, in other words, if you decided to do something else with it before the 25 years was over, you could buy back that portion of time that wasn't eaten up, perhaps.
But then the city would be paying for stuff.
Then the city would be paying for it, right?
Right. That's the only problem.
Yeah, sure.
It's okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's our property, yeah. So paying for the improvements, yeah. But anyway, it's just an idea. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Pete?
I've heard it mentioned a couple of times, but parking? What, what are the thoughts or the plans for parking, public parking?
There, may I? There are no, there is no public parking planned on this site. If you saw this, if you drive by the site, you would see there is no space or accommodations or even a turn lane possibility. It's no different than at the end of Harmony, there's a boat access, and there's no parking. And what people do is they drop off the boat, and then they drive to Carl Johnson or someplace else. I would envision the same thing here, where you have public accesses nearby, you have the county facilities nearby, and people would walk from the beach side, as well as the residential folks nearby.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Just to tag on to what Audrey said, I agree. This is really becomes a passive neighborhood park, and really meant for those people who live in the area would not expect that you'd get a lot of vehicular traffic going here anyway.
We did discuss signage.
Walkers and bikers can enjoy it.
Do you want to motion, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, if you, if you desire so.
I'll make a motion. We forward this on, with the city council, making the recommendations we've offered.
So I'll fill in the requisite documents.
You start preparing the required documents.
In a second.
There's a motion in a second. Are there any other comments?
Just, and just to understand your motion, Councilman, that's with the items that we've discussed here, the concerns the council has. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And more that I will think about.
Okay, yeah, and I guess part of that was to architecturally differentiate the sides, right? Part of that. Talk about the ability to buy out, see if there's something to do that, and just in case, because you never know, whatever. I have a question about the access issue. I mean, when you try to, I try to think, when we look down the future, 25 years into the future, and the ability to access the water in some places like that, I think this is a great idea. I love the idea of a public partnership, but I'd kind of like to try to reserve something on the northernmost boundary to where somebody could actually, I mean, we're running out of places for people to get to the water, to launch a kayak, not parking there, not camping out there, not doing anything other than to be able to put a kayak in the water or something like that. I don't, I may have our time thinking about another area, in that area, where you could do that without going further down the way. So I think that that's something that we need to be aware of, even if it's, if it's part of a plan five years from now, we need to kind of, I think, reserve the ability to come back at another time to figure something out.
Let me ask a question. Would we assist on the mangrove issue there, because there would have to be mangrove clearing?
It's not going to be an issue to get a permit if you're going for boat access through mangroves. It's not an issue, in my professional opinion.
And I will use your professional opinion.
But I'm not saying that that's, it may not be anything that we ever do. It may not be feasible or at some time, but it's something that I think that we need to keep as an option.
Okay.
I think it's always good to keep an option. So I would keep that in mind in the contractual thing you do. Yes?
Now that we've kind of covered those items, what about the ospreys? Is increased traffic going to impede them, harm, I mean, you know, I just think this question need to be asked.
We assume people will probably just sit at the bench and be casual observers. I don't, you know, with the maintenance path that we talk about and the circulation, you know, people have the right, but I don't really foresee people using it much, so I would not envision that becoming a problem. And I guess if it ever did become a problem, we'd have to try to close the gate a little bit.
How high up is that?
Thirty, thirty-some feet, probably. It's up pretty tall.
And they seem pretty rugged and pretty hardy, but I mean, it wouldn't...
I don't think, I'm not an osprey expert, so I couldn't speak to that.
They're not like the eagles.
Yeah.
They're pretty social.
Thank you. Yes, Martha?
Oh, yeah, well, talking about that, if, you know, for some, I'm sure in a amount of time, that platform will deteriorate, who will be responsible for putting that back up? I mean, it's just like, not going to just go away. We'll have a platform there.
Well, I believe the platform was put up by the county prior to the city's, either prior to say, I'm not sure who put the platform up because it's on public land, so...
I thought you did.
I might need to check with Carol List on that, but I would imagine...
I thought you did.
You know, it's part of our responsibility.
So the city would put the platform back, not the agreement, a license holder?
I think that's something that we should talk about.
We would have to work out.
Okay, thanks. Questions?
Contractually kind of figure that out.
Right, because there was a tree there, and the tree fell.
Yes.
I remember the tree falling a few years ago.
Yeah.
But the platform was put up before the tree fell.
We need another platform somewhere else.
The tree was going to fall.
It was going to fall.
Right.
Yeah, good. Okay, any other questions before we proceed? All right? And you're going to bring that back as soon as you get to...
Right, once I get everything hammered out.
Pasting this together. Okay, good. Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation by the Cafe of Life, represented as regarding the Lightner Creek Neighborhood Park, and discussion by council. And who is this gentleman coming up here?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
City Council. Some of the staff has been here since the first year we were a city. That's very interesting.
Yeah, it is very.
I would also like to thank the many people who got up and spoke in favor of the Cafe of Life, those that are here in attendance to support it. I also ask that the good Lord bless the person, the one person that spoke against it. I think congratulations are in order at this time for the award that you won, the ICMA. I believe a thanks is due to all the previous councils, to the, both city managers, the many people that served on various boards, and of course, to the many people in the public that have helped this city become what it has. It appears that the award was given, in part at least, by, for the reason that we've been very successful in public and private partnerships, whether it be businesses, whether it be other government agencies, or whether it be with individuals. So I would say at this time, I'd like to give you the opportunity to think positively about another public and private partnership. It was 18 months ago when the Cafe of Life came before you and asked to have you restore the benches at the Banyan Tree area. And at that particular time, you all, almost as a person, committed to the fact that you would be helpful in trying to help them find a facility. At the conclusion of that meeting, I started thinking about some property that I was aware of in the District Two, which was my old district when I was a councilman, and took a drive-through there and saw some pretty decent pieces of property were left. I contacted Bruce Wheatley and asked him, took him out there and showed him some, and I said, would this be a site that you might be interested in? And the answer was a definite yes. The next thing I did was to meet with Gary, this was going on just about at the time of the transition, and ask him what the deal was on the property. This was property that was left over from the construction of Imperial Parkway, which the county purchased on behalf of the city. And when it was all done, the pieces that were left were decided to go to the county, which was a good decision, because then they had to maintain them rather than us maintaining them. Gary told me that he thought there was a possible interest in the property by the Benita Springs Utilities. So at that time, I made a couple of different visits to the Benita Springs Utilities and found out that they were interested in possibly some of those sites for additional wells. When we got down to looking at the maps, there were two pieces that they said were big enough to put wells on, and, but they were only able to use one because by law, they had to have the wells over 1,000 feet apart. So we asked them which one they wanted. They showed us which piece they would be interested in, and we took the other piece and started investigating what the possibility would be. The first thing we were told was we'd have to get permission from the county if, whether they'd want to give up the property or not. The county then contacted all of their departments and, at that point, decided there was no value to the property as far as the county is concerned. Carl had come on about that time. We brought him up to speed, and I think he has a letter on file from the county saying that they are willing to transfer that property back to the city. The discussions that we had at staff at that time indicated that this, this would require a zoning effort if we were going to build a pavilion there. And the more we discussed it, the more we looked at the property, we decided that there's more property than what we need. What could we do that would benefit the area? And we thought about gardens at first, and then in one of the discussions, it came up that, well, if you were willing to make it into a park, it would not require any zoning because parks would be available in residential areas. We then took that approach, and we started investigating further, sitting down with various people to do surveying and whether it would work and so on and so forth. Because our staff also encouraged us that we needed to find out how the neighborhood felt about it. And because we were not going to go through a zoning process, which has a regulation on how many people you should be concerned about within a given circle, we excited, we decided to expand that circle because we felt it was important that neighborhoods support this. So we put together a statistically-controlled survey and used the help of a gentleman who was an expert in this, and went out and did a door-to-door survey, getting statistically what was considered to be an acceptable amount of people. I was at the training session where the people were asked, they were trained to go out and do this survey, and was very pleased at how I saw the training take place, how they were instructed to ask the same contiguous questions every time, so that we knew that the answers would be statistically acceptable. We then came back to council in May and presented these to you, and you looked very favorably upon it, but you asked that there be some more information gathered. You asked that we extend the area that we surveyed to include, include the streets that went north and south from Rosemary Park Drive, from Rosemary Drive, to Benita Drive. So we did that with the same statistics setup that we used for the rest of it. upon it, but you asked that there be some more information gathered. You asked that we extend the area that we surveyed to include, include the streets that went north and south from Rosemary Park Drive, from Rosemary Drive, to we needed Drive. So, we did that with the same statistics setup that we used for the rest of it. Also, there was an indication that you would like to have us have a general public meeting. And we did that, and I'll speak more about it later. But, at this time, I think it's important that we probably review the statistics where we're at. We have in our presentation here, two people. The first one is Mr. Jim Vale, who you met before, and I asked staff to hand out his resume to you because it is rather extensive. I think it shows the qualifications he has, and I would just like to, for the record, read the last paragraph then of what his resume states. "He moved to Media Springs in the summer of 1998 and was appointed visiting professor of computer information systems in the College of Business at Florida Gulf Coast University. Concurrently, he established a consulting practice specializing in management of acquisitions, information systems, project management, and incentive compensation. His recent engagements include internal systems evaluation for continuing care retirement community, and a re-architectural of collaborative workflow processes at an $8 million a year nonprofit." I'd like to introduce you at this time, Mr. Jim Vale. Jim?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I propose to offer a quick refresher on our survey this past spring, and then bring you up to date with the results of our subsequent research, to which Jay referred. In February and March, we surveyed the residents of Rosemary Drive and the Lightner neighborhood of Rosemary Park. You'll recall that ninety-two percent of those surveyed were in favor of the park, and ninety-point-six percent had no problem with the Cafe of Life using the park. As Jay mentioned, you asked us to do two further surveys. You asked us to survey residents of the side streets south of Rosemary Drive, between Rosemary and Benita Drive, and the non-resident owners of Rosemary Park properties, that is, properties within the Lightner neighborhood. Let me deal first with the results of the expanded on-the-ground survey. If it's convenient, please turn to page four of the addendum report, which was in the This table summarizes the results of both phases of the research. Just above the horizontal line, you'll see that the percentage of residents favoring the park, ninety-two percent, is unchanged, while the percentage of those agreeable to the Cafe of Life's use of the park actually increased in the second phase and overall stands at ninety-two-point-four percent. In short, our earlier findings were overwhelmingly confirmed. Questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions for the gentleman regarding the, the scope or regarding the conclusions drawn? All right.
Let me now turn to the survey of non-resident owners, which is on page five. Unfortunately, our mailing to eighty non-resident owners yielded only ten responses, which were evenly divided. These results are not statistically valid, and it would not be responsible for me to draw a conclusion from this data. This survey, which was mailed in both English and Spanish, and is reproduced in this addendum report, required an enormous effort. I'm sorry the results are not useful, but I'm here to report the facts. Questions at this point?
Yes, questions?
I just don't remember it being non-resident, I thought it was inclusive of all property owners, the property owners themselves, because we know there's a lot of also, long-term property owners that have been there.
Of course, the resident property owners were included in the first survey. And so, council's request was, "How about the owners who are not resident?" And you may recall that there was a significant number of those in the sample. Ten of them actually were non-resident owners of a property of a certain address in Rosemary Park, but actually lived at another address in Rosemary Park. So, we had to unwind all that and then send the mailing in both English and Spanish to the owners who were not resident at all in Rosemary Park. And we simply did not get a satisfactory number of responses.
Okay, any other questions for the gentleman on this matter? Okay, go ahead.
The report of the ice cream social is in this addendum report. If there are questions in, on that subject, I'm gonna have to call on someone else, I just do the numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. The next person we're having come up is Jessica Heperlin. She is our administrative coordinator for the Cafe of Life. Her educational background is that she graduated from University of Florida in Gainesville. She shortly thereafter received a job as a member service specialist with the Florida Credit Union in Gainesville. And in a matter of three years, she moved up the ladder to an assistant manager, and then eventually a branch manager. At some point in time in there, she decided that southwest Florida was where they wanted to live, and came down here and got a job as a branch manager and worked on a float team for Riverside Bank in Cape Coral. At that time, she was responsible to provide management leadership to seven branch banks. Her love of her life is doing what she is doing. I think when you hear her presentation and see what she has to say, you'll see that we were very fortunate to be able to get her. Jessica?
Morning.
It was actually an easy move for me to come back down here because I was raised in Fort Myers. I grew up in Fort Myers from the time I was seven years old, and I've seen a lot of changes in that community and in the Benita Springs community. I remember when coming to Benita was a huge adventure for us kids because it was so far out. So, it's wonderful to be back. Many here today are familiar with the Cafe of Life. For those who do not know us, I would like to present just a very brief overview of our services. And for those who do know of us, I hope to bring a clearer picture of the work of our organization. I remember in school, learning early about the five Ws of storytelling, who, what, when, where, and how. Perhaps answering some of these Ws will help clarify why we are asking for your support today. Founded in 1998, the Cafe of Life began simply enough serving warm coffee to clients. But, over the last fourteen years, the ever-present and pressing needs of the poor and hungry have given birth to a broad range of services to those, to assist those in need. The Cafe of Life is you, the citizens of Benita Springs, coming together to ensure a better quality of life for your neighbors in need. It's churches and civic groups, it's your Lee County community business leaders, it's churches with, I'm sorry, it's partnerships with businesses such as Royal Scoop Ice Cream, Keller Williams Realty, Target stores and restaurants such as Sneaky Pete's, Pinot's, Luna Rosa, and Buffalo Chips. Since the beginnings of the humble soup kitchen, the needs of the poor have not changed, but the faces have. Today, more than ever, women and children are forced to rely on the kindness of strangers for assistance. Thanks to our generous donors, we are able to provide clients a hot meal five days a week without the pressure or embarrassment of answering qualifying questionnaires. Gently-used toys, clothes, and household items are also available. Local markets supply donated groceries for a food pantry, and we partner with social service agencies such as the Salvation Army and Benita Family Health Center to provide basic health and basic human services. Thanks to our dedicated volunteers, each month, there's a very special treat for children five years old and under, their very own birthday party. Incredibly, a first-time event for some of our youngest guests. Most of us don't have to give a second thought from where our next meal will come. We are among the eighty-five percent our government calls food secure. But, that's not insurance for everyone. According to the USDA last year, fifteen percent of American households were food insecure, meaning they had difficulty at some time during the year providing enough food for all of their members due to a lack of resources. Of these, five-point-seven percent, or six-point-eight million households, lived with food shortages severe enough that some members of their household had disrupted eating patterns during the year. In other words, they didn't have enough food to eat at mealtime, or they missed some meals altogether. These food shortage levels are the same as in 2008 and 2009, when the current economic crisis first began. And food shortages are not just a national problem. According to the Census Bureau, in 2010, a survey reported Benita Springs, in Benita Springs, over nineteen percent of your children live below the poverty level. Based on last year's census population, that would be nearly twelve-hundred children. That's why we're here today. The need is real, and it is immediate. Please join with us to provide a hope and a future for all of Benita. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Mayor Aaron?
Thank you, Jessica. One of the other requests that was given to us to undertake would be to try and have a neighborhood meeting of some sort, and we thought diligently on it, and past experience had taught me that Sunday, for that neighborhood, Sunday seemed to be the best day to have a meeting. The next question was, "How do we draw them out?" We thought it best that the meeting be in that area, there's no facility, so we decided to try and make the park available. To help entice it, we offered an ice cream social. We sent out five-hundred-and-ninety-three invitations, which covers a large area down there, and included in that were invitations to the council. We printed up a four-colored poster, which you have a copy of. It was both in English and in Spanish, and we mailed them out first class. We had a company come in and clean up the area, remove a lot of the debris, we treated it for fire ants, and then had a greedy miner come in and survey it, and stake out the actual location of the many different facilities that would go on inside this park. Then, we ran tapes from all the corners that they staked out, different colored tapes for different pavilions, areas that we would provide some type of activity in, so that when people came in, they could go to any particular color they wanted to. And in those areas, we had people that were volunteers of the Cafe of Life, as well as two sheriff's deputies, that would help to address any questions. Sad to say, as much as we tried and enticed, the turnout was rather small. And we did, at the time, people came in, offered them the opportunity to fill out a questionnaire similar to the questionnaire that was used in the survey, and we only received nineteen of them back. There were four people that I'm aware of that were very concerned about security. There was a lot of discussion about general security, but there were four people that brought up a concern that I think at least some members of the council have, and that is, "What are we gonna do about the people going into the park and coming into the park? Make sure they don't loiter." The sheriff's department explained to one of them that I was standing next to, and I'm sure they did to the rest, that their intent was, the first few weeks, that the park was open, and that we were serving, that they would patrol the area afterwards to make sure there was nobody loitering. It is also, the instructions that would be given to the volunteers there, that they are the last ones that leave the park, that they take various routes out of the immediate area, there's only one route, well, two routes if you go to Benita Lane, and split those up and drive down them and make sure nobody is loitering. We don't think it's an issue. And as I explained to the people that I talked to there on that, there's over a half a million dollars going to be invested in this park and the pavilion. This is money that's been donated by the, or will be donated, and has been donated at this point, by various citizens of this community. There are no tax dollars involved in this project. We're not gonna, if, if an issue does arise, and it's attributed to the fact that the Cafe of Life is there, we're not gonna abandon that contribution and those people that have been so generous in contributing to it. We will solve that problem, if it becomes a problem at that time. I think I would just like to leave you with this, that it is our desire to move forward on this. We feel very strongly that because thirty to forty percent of our clients come from that area, that it would be welcome for them. It's definitely a welcome amenity for that community, as the kids have no place to play except in the streets, and certainly is an asset to the city of Benita Springs. So, at this point, I'd open up to questions if there are any.
Okay. First of all, before we go to questions, Jay, I want to thank you and everybody with the Cafe that, and for our staff that has worked so hard on this. Regardless of what your opinion is on this matter, I gotta tell you, you have, you have done everything that we have asked you to do, jumped through every hoop, so thank you so much for all your hard work.
We've done it with pleasure.
You can't, you can't argue with the product itself there, you know, and we can have various opinions on this matter, but thank you so much for your...
Well, and I appreciate your comment in the paper the other day, that there have been a lot of people that contribute a lot of effort to that particular area of the city, and that is so true.
Absolutely. Great groups of people have been doing work in there, under your leadership especially. Thank you so much. Counsel, any questions? Yes, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, the amount of time that's actually spent going to and from the feeding time, if you will, is about an hour and a half?
Well, the, the, the serving takes place in about an hour and a half, two hours, probably about two hours.
About two hours.
When you're setting up and tearing down, and the volunteers are the last ones to leave. So, the Cafe of Life would want to use it from, say, well, people are, surprisingly, at a, at a board meeting we had yesterday, I find out that people want to know if they could eat a little bit earlier because of one meal they get per day, they can't wait till ten-thirty, so would we consider serving at ten? But, it'll require two, two to two and a half hours at most to set up and tear down. The rest of the afternoon, the park is available for the local residents, if anybody wants to use it, and of course, all day weekends.
Second, just a comment, as a liaison to the Lee County Sheriff's Department, we have our regular meetings, and I have never heard anything from them indicating that it's a crime issue. Matter of fact, Lieutenant Sedwick is back there, and I just confirmed with him, "Has there been any problems up until today?" He says, "No."
Thank you.
All right, Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Jay, I attempted to find the location with my son, and I really did try, but I got lost. And I was embarrassed to say, well, not necessarily embarrassed, I made a mistake. But, the plan, and of course, the emails that we all receive at any given time about the Cafe of Life, and sometimes, we all have to make decisions based on the most information. I can honestly say to you that the Cafe of Life has presented and presented a wealth of information, and I like paper. So, I, I've looked at the situation and thoroughly, and I'm anxious to hear from the other board members here too, if there's any other comments, but thank you for your work.
Thank you, Bill, and I'll make sure, if you ever need the services, we'll give you directions to get in there.
Send him some more paper. Anyway, Janet, do you have something for us? Or, no?
Are we, this is the time?
Yeah, we're talking. Yeah, we're talking.
Okay. Initially, when this was brought before me, I thought this was a wonderful idea, I thought this was great. Finally, Cafe of Life will have a home. And we threw together a really quick meeting with the neighborhood that Jay was at and Bruce was at, and I was, have to say that I, I think we all left that meeting a little shocked and dismayed by what the moms and the residents of the neighborhood had to say. They were, they were very concerned. This is, the, the main concern was, this is where they live, this is their neighborhood, and we are inviting strangers into their neighborhood. Not saying good or bad, just strangers. And they had, this is where their children play, their children play in the streets there. And they said, they were, there were just lots of concerns, which made me walk away from that meeting, saying, "How dare I assume anything is better for someone else's neighborhood." So, I just received a phone call from someone who lives there and has lived there their whole life, and they said, "I know where you live." And I said, "Well, everybody knows where I live, you know, it's, it's public record, it's out there." And he said, "How would you feel if Cafe of Life was asking to go down the end of your street? And you're telling us today to search our hearts and be honest and true and to be that, and to have, be able to sleep with myself?" I said, "No, I, I would not want strangers going down my street either. I, I just don't. I didn't want it." So, he said, "Well, then, how..." So he said, well, then how can you do this to my street? I can't. I just can't. In all good conscience, I received a phone call just the other day after this was in the paper, from a resident who thought that this was over, that this wasn't coming back. And when he saw that it was coming back, he, he started the conversation with Janet. I don't have a problem with Cafe of Life, but I have a problem with strangers in my neighborhood. I have a problem with people trying to find it, who can't find it because there isn't a direct route to it. I have a problem when people are going to be cutting through my backyard to get there. I have a problem when we have to call the sheriff's office because there are people loitering in our neighborhood, and those people are strangers to us. We don't know them. And he went on with the things that he had a problem with. So I'd like to say, I, I just really still have a lot of concerns that just haven't been addressed, as to how, and what makes this the best place for this to be located.
I think to answer, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think to answer the question, first of all, we tried to reach out at everybody we could in that community. The statistics overwhelmingly support the project. So, and, and I think the conversations here today overwhelmingly support the project. So there are always going to be a few that have concerns. We tried to address those. I personally tried to address them. The day of the ice cream social, as I said, I talked to the four or five people that I thought had concerns, and at least left them knowing that we would address it if it became an issue. The gentleman that called you the other day is basing his thoughts on a lot of assumptions. Those assumptions, we don't think exist. Certainly, people are going to have to walk in to get there. Again, thirty to forty percent of them live right in that area. So I got a feeling, the way, and Jennifer or Jessica could probably answer this better, but what I witnessed, they're concerned about who, the people that, that use the facility under the banyan tree are concerned about each other. And I have a feeling that the thirty or forty percent that live there are going to make sure that the rest of them are aware of the fact, this is my neighborhood.
Ben, may I?
Just a second. One second. Yeah, and just, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I, you know, I was at the ice cream social. We all received the invitation. The invitation doesn't say on it that it has anything to do with Cafe of Life. It was come for the Lightner Creek Park. And what I heard that day, there was a gal there who lives in the neighborhood, and she came over to me, and she said, I'd like you to meet my neighbors. So I went over, and she introduced me to her neighbors, and her neighbors had signed the petition in favor of the Cafe of Life. And she said to her neighbors, do you really know what Cafe of Life is? And she said, no, we want the park. So when she explained what Cafe of Life was, she said, that's the group that's under the banyan tree. The woman was just like, that's not what I, I want, the park. So I just, there's still been a barrier as to getting out the information, as to that there is another, going to be another use for the facility, and that's, you know, and even with your survey on page four, have you heard of the Cafe of Life? Eighty-five people, only the eighty-five, had ever heard of it. So a lot of them are, I think, there's still, I, I, issues.
Well, first of all, let me assure you that it was an oversight, that the Cafe of Life wasn't mentioned on there. We all assumed, when this was put together, that with all the press that's been on it, all the activity on it, everybody tied together the fact that the park and the Cafe of Life were one and the same. I, I, I guess that, again, looking at the statistics, you'll notice that the amount of people that supported the Cafe of Life went up during the second, and I assumed during the ice cream social, it would have went up again, had we had a record of it. But I, I think the community is pretty aware of what, what our intentions are there.
Okay. Yes, Martha?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Good to see you here.
Doctor?
I did, pardon me? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Rare we have two mayors in one place. I had called Mr. Wheatley when the Women's Club had so generously given their facility to the Cafe of Life, to discuss and hopefully see if our city could allow the Cafe to use that facility. And I, I've met resistance on that. You know, our good friends, Riley Randell, said, if we find a place, meaning the Cafe, that the council will support it. It was not in a residential area that we supported, because I remember years ago that the Cafe, and I think the United Way also, was looking for a place in Rosemary Park, and, and we kind of said, you know, that's not a, that's not a winner, because that would be in a residential area, you can't do it. So when you had mentioned zoning, well, we, you know, this way we don't have to do zoning. Zoning would have notified those neighbors about what the uses would have been, and I would not have voted to zone a, what I think is appropriate in a commercial area, or an industrial area, in a residential area. You, you were here, Mr. Mayor, when we allowed zoning in that, in that community to go from mobile home one to residential one, meaning we had hopes that people would invest their money to build in mortar and bricks homes, a lot of money, and to transfer from mobile homes, to see this as an up-and-coming neighborhood. And some people have invested their money, and now that they've invested their money, we're saying, well, we're going to invite these people, we don't really know who they are. I have a solution. I hope I have a solution. I, I wanted to see if we could use the Women's Club, might not be possible, but I, we all received on council a piece of paper last week, it was an aerial photograph showing where, this is related to another social services issue, but where social services are allowed in the city, Social Services Three and Four, and one of those places was the Benita Springs Lions Club. I'm on the Board of Directors there. Al Greenwood is our president, and I'm sorry to tell you, but he had a, he had a health issue, he's been in the hospital, let's all pray for Al, a serious one. But he, as you know, Buffalo Chips, is a big supporter of Cafe of Life. And I brought to the board, I have it on their agenda, to have Cafe of Life considered as our guests at the Lions Club. It's Social Services Three. We'll have to talk to the board and convince the Board of Directors, but the Lions Club's main motto is, we serve. We helped start the Benita Springs Assistance Office. You know, we've got an eye clinic, we've got the thrift store, we've got services that probably your clients at the Cafe of Life already use. The difference, it's indoors, and I will argue these points for you. It's indoors, it's air-conditioned, it'll be heated, we have a non, we have a commissary. By the way, we just got a one-hundred percent approval on our kitchen inspection, thank you, one of one-hundred and ninety-seven in the state for cleanliness. We've got walk-in refrigerators, we've got four, you know, four to, I don't know, ten stalls for bathrooms, we've got four different bathrooms in that facility, we've got tables, chairs. We have everything that the Cafe of Life, we've got a serving area, we've got everything the Cafe of Life, and I will defend the Cafe of Life to come there. My concern at this area is number one. I would not zone, we won't even allow mobile food carts in the city. Why am I going to allow a, a mobile feeding air station, where my concern is safety of clients because of food sanitation? How many of our, our volunteers are trained in food sanitation? The other thing is the access issue, but also, it's a precedent, because we haven't, in the city of Orlando, they have a certain ordinance about how organizations like this interact in city parks. We haven't even taken that step here. So if the Cafe of Life does move to Lightner Creek, we're setting a precedent. Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry, forgive me. We're setting a precedent there, and we haven't taken care of the fact that another organization could move into town underneath the banyan tree. We want to support Cafe of Life. I have supported Cafe of Life since nineteen ninety-eight. I thought when they started as a twelve-step program for the Hispanic community, it was a well-needed organization, and it's changed its purpose. That's fine. You know, I've been hungry in my life, I know a lot of my friends have been hungry, and I've been getting food to them, okay? I've supported a lot of homeless people, too. But I would like to say, yeah, I have, I've been housing homeless people now for like the last three years. So I would like to say that I will help you, and I'd like to see this tabled until December, if we can talk to the board there and get that done. We've got the parking, because that's another issue, is parking, too. We've got the parking, it's right in the downtown area where people are used to going, and I think it could be something that could work. So I, I want to work on solutions, I've always tried to do that, and this might be one that, hold off on, if we're having any vote today, hold off on that. Let's see if we can get this worked out, and if that's amenable to you guys. And it's already a place that's being used for the same purposes. So, yeah.
All right. Good. Did you want to respond for us?
I think I'd like to make a few comments on that, not knowing for sure what the facility is, I, I don't know what you're talking about, but I realize that we have a piece of property within a block of that that we own now. When you mention that probably some of our clients use the services or there, they probably do one at a time. We have eighty to a hundred, sometimes a hundred and twenty people congregate there in two hours. I don't think the neighborhood, nor the city, would be too appreciative of that being there.
Oh, no. Famous pancake.
All right. Peter, did you have something for us?
I did, I did.
Pete, go ahead.
Can I just finish up, Mayor? Just, just real quick. I'll tell you that the room.
Don't mind me, I'm just chairman. But go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to respond.
You two go ahead and work it out.
Yeah, oh, I'd love to work it out. The room can accommodate up to a hundred and eighty people. So it's, our council here is aware of, well, that room, they've been there for the volunteer appreciation lunches, and we have a lot of people come to our eye clinic. It's the largest free eye clinic in the state of Florida. So we can sometimes have a great deal of people there. We have, thank you to you, Mayor, voting to expand their parking lot at the Lions Club. There's a great deal of parking. We're also talking about coming to the city and building a pavilion there, so overflow outside picnic tables under a pavilion like we have in our park. It, it's really something I think you should consider, and something that I'm willing to, to help you with.
Right. Thank you. Pete?
Right. Mayor and Bruce, when we met, we had a wonderful meeting. We talked the NFL to death, we had it all solved, and we didn't talk about referees, though, did we? We didn't see that coming. Had a wonderful meeting, bonded, you know, because we, we don't know each other, but came to know each other, and it was a great meeting. And I told you that my mind would be open on this subject, and it is. My mind is wide open on this subject. And you've heard a lot of testimony here today, we've heard a lot of stories, we, we know there's a need. That, that is not the issue to me, the need. The location to me is the issue, and remains the issue, of folks getting in and out of that area through a neighborhood. So it, it's not the service that you, it's a wonderful service. It's a needed service, but the location for me here is an issue, so.
There are ways that can be addressed, and I'm not going to sit here today and try and explain them all to you, but until it becomes an issue, as I said, the investment here is tremendous, not only in dollars, but in, in the feelings that many people in the city have toward it. If it is an issue, it can be addressed very simply.
Okay. All right.
I, I think there's enough credibility with the Cafe of Life to be sure that when we say that, it'll happen, if it becomes a need.
All right.
Yep.
Go, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you.
Forget about you.
Sorry, man.
This is not the first social service issue that's come to this council, and they're always emotional, and we always find a big crowd. There's not anybody on this, this council that doesn't have a heart for what's going on. That's, that's not the question. The question is how you do it. And for me, I don't respond well to threats, and I don't appreciate my Christianity being called into question. So I try to make my decisions based on several things. One of them is legality of the question. Secondly is the need of, of issue. And, and the third is really, is there a benefit to the city? I don't think there's any question, the Cafe of Life is legally acceptable, it's, it's done its job, it provides the legal requirement, meets the legal requirements. And also, unlike some of the social service questions that come to us, there is a proven need in Benita Springs for the Cafe of Life. It's not a drain on city resources, and it's a proven, it's a proven entity that's done the job for the city. And the last question is, does it benefit the city and improve quality of life? That's an issue that I think is also a positive. We have improved quality of life for a number of people in the city who sometimes don't have a voice. And it's important to me that we not keep asking this Cafe of Life to come back with, with more answers to questions that we bring up at the last minute. If, if we don't push this forward today, if we don't vote to take this forward on the Lightner Creek proposal, on the Lightner Park proposal, then we, we simply throw it back in the Cafe of Life's lap again, to come back to us with more, more responses. I think that's inappropriate. I, if there's a, if there's a different, if there's a different way to handle it that's been brought up today, I certainly wish it had been brought to the council in some form other than at this, at this particular public forum, because then we would have had a chance to look at it, think about it. As such, I'm going to motion that we move this forward, and if it's not approved, that's fine, but I think it's time that we stood up and said, is this the right thing for the Cafe of Life to be where, in this new park? Is it the right thing for the people in this community as a whole? And I think it is, and I'll make that motion now.
I'll second it.
Now, the motion is for the, to instruct staff to start developing a contract between us and, and them, right?
And the county.
And the county land.
Exactly. Audrey?
Yes, I want to point out with both this parcel, as well as the one we spoke about earlier, Island Place, the charter requires that if there is any kind of conveyance or lease, and license is similar to a lease, to authorize the use of any city property in over fifteen thousand dollars in value, I, has to be done by ordinance. So you will see it come back, even though there won't be a public hearing on the zoning issue, you will see it come back in the form of public hearings for the ordinance, you know, to approve any license agreement.
Okay. Just to chime in myself here, I've got a, a young man who works for me, well, I've got lots of young men who work for me, but, because I'm old now, and I don't, it's too hot, it just is. But anyway, this young man, he, he was, lives in Lightner Creek there, and he, you know, is, was born in Texas, but now he, he lives here, and, but he lived in, he grew up and, and went to school there. His parents still live in Lightner Creek, real close to this area. He's worked for me for almost fifteen years now. When he started working for me, he was just seventeen years old, in a bunch of trouble, and we got him out of that trouble, and now he's got a wife and five beautiful kids, owns a home. Awesome, awesome young man, just, just real bright. I'm real proud of him. And he, he still knows everybody around in that area, and he, he came to me, and he says, and he was kind of smiling about it, he says, you know that, I had a bunch of the people come up to me, and they, they don't understand what's going on, what's going on? And he says, well, and he explained to them, and they all were kind of scratching their heads about it, and Dave says that he pointed at them, he says, well, you, you know what they are? You go there every day, every day they're open, you go to, and then he looked around, he said, you do, too? And you, he says, almost every one of them that had come to him, all his friends there, avail themselves of the Cafe of Life right now, that, that was around there. So I thought that was, it was interesting, you know, I mean, sometimes people, you know, don't actually even realize where they're at, or what they're doing at the time, apparently. But I think because of that, and because that this group of people, you guys, that has, has invested their time, their energy with sidewalks, with affordable housing, with, I mean, I mean, with streets, and, and doing everything they can to raise this community up, I think that the investment that you've all have made, you're going to protect that, you're going to guard that. You have. You, you've been there for the last twelve years. You've been doing that. I'm, I'm just amazed at the time, effort, and energy that you all have, have done. And I, and I know that there's fear that it will do this or that, and that somehow transients will come through the area, whatever, but I have faith in this organization. I, I know how organized you can be, and that you are, and I know how compassionate, and I know how protective you are of the things that you do. I have no problem at all with proceeding with this contract right here, because I think that probably that this contract will allow us to answer some of the fears that we have. So far, we can make commitments to each other through that contract on how it's going to be operated, how it's going to, we're going to take care of it, what the city's responsibility's for. So there, you got, you got my ten cents on it.
Thank you.
And, yeah, my pleasure. Anybody else wish to chime in before we call, call the roll on this? Yes?
Yeah, all I'm asking to do is give it a month, see if we can talk to the Lions. We've got, excuse me?
Lease?
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
We, you know, we, and, and I, I think it's come up now, number one, because our last president just passed away, and I knew Al was very instrumental in working with the Cafe, and I approached him about it, so we just didn't have an opportunity. Number two, it was pretty short notice that this was coming up October eighteenth, okay? So.
Easy. Easy, but we're going to let everyone, we're going to let everyone talk.
Sure notice, meaning these things take a lot of time. Sure notice, I mean, these things take a lot of time. We, I've been trying to talk about the Women's Club, because you have a great facility there. People are used to going to that area. For some reason, you know, our community development doesn't think that's appropriate. I do. But we already have a facility that doesn't need zoning. It's a large facility. It's got everything that you would need. It's accessible. It's commercial. It's all those things that City Council said that they wanted, to not have it in a residential area, but to have it on a commercial property, highly well-maintained, clean, air-conditioned, heated. That's a concern for me. How come you're not building an enclosure for people to go in when it's cold out? And, and there's bugs, you know? I mean, that would be another plus if that could happen. It's still, people are beating outside. So I hope that council would consider holding off until the December 5th meeting, and I will work my butt off to try to help get this forwarded at the Lions Club, and talk to Mr. Wheatley and Mr. Aaron, Mayor Aaron the Honorable, about the possibility. I really think it'd be a winner for our city, as, as opposed to putting it in a residential area. I would not zone a restaurant in a residential area. And our community development doesn't recommend mobile units. They don't want mobile units, which I think is a loss.
Okay. All right.
You got food truck wars, and those are cool.
I don't know where the mobile unit comes in. I, can I thank?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for making that motion. And I'd just like to say that we've been at this a long time. We've spent a lot of dollars, a lot of time. We have a lot of support from people in this community that are very generous with their time and money. And I think they're looking for an answer today. So I appreciate the fact that the motion was made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, Steve?
It is my motion, and Councilman Simons, it doesn't prohibit the group from working with Lions Club over the next month. It simply says, we support what the Cafe of Life does, and we don't want to hold you back any longer. I also have asked about the Women's Club, since they own that building. I'm told it's in the redevelopment area, the overlay, and we can't, we can't allow that sort of thing. I understand that. But I think the Lions Club is also in the redevelopment area. So I'm not sure how you, don't, we know if, if it is, is one thing. But is it, is it in the redevelopment area, Lions Club?
No.
Well, it is, it is zoned, it is zoned appropriately for, for that use, as I understand it. But then again, Jay's right, you know, you're going to go through all kinds of various things. Number one, you don't know that the Lions Club, you don't know that the Lions Club would approve the use. You don't know what the neighborhood's going to think about it. We had proposed at one time, I talked about this to somebody one time, we had proposed at one time to move the Cafe of Life over across the park, underneath where, where the bathrooms were and where the banjo was. And quite frankly, Nutting Like at Grove, they lost their mind. They did. I mean, I mean, that, you know, and they just, they just didn't want to see that happen. So I think that's what Jay was referring to. So.
My motion still stands.
Okay. So with the motion still stands?
Thank you.
Martha, I think we're wearing this out. Any other comments or anything to add new to this conversation?
No.
No? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Simons?
No.
Councilman Longcar?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
I believe that's four, three in favor. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And you're, you're going to move on with the contract negotiations and the other things, right?
We'll work on the lease.
Okay, so there'll be another vote to come.
Right, we have to acquire the property first before we can.
And good for us, we got lots, lots more public hearings coming forward on this.
Mayor, may I ask we take a break?
Yes, we are going to take a break for five minutes, please. That's it, five minutes.